Call this meeting of the Pittsburgh City Commission to order. Will you please rise with me for the pledge of allegiance? Pledge allegiance-
To the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
You may be seated. All right, we will open the meeting this evening with public input, so if you have anything to share this evening, feel free to come forward to the podium, state your name and address.
Hello, my name is Kelly Gartner. My address is 1407 Bittner Place, here in Pittsburgh.
And I'm Marcia Marconi, I am her mother-in-law, and our address is 110 East Center Street in Madison, South Dakota.
I'm a lifelong resident of Pittsburgh, Kansas. I see a lot of familiar faces in here, so I know a lot of you guys know that. My husband and Justin, husband Justin and I, he's back there, had the good fortune to purchase our family home about five years ago. This was a home that was built by my grandparents. It was the first house in Bittner addition. We're very, very proud to own it. Since we moved in there, we got along wonderfully, everything's been beautiful, we love our neighborhood. I came here tonight to talk to you about ordinance number G-1260, specifically Article 4, having to do with recreational vehicles and trailers. Subpoint B is my main concern here. This is the part where it says that "At no time shall a permanently or temporarily parked or stored recreational vehicle or item of recreational equipment be occupied for use or used for living, sleeping, or housekeeping purposes, except a recreational vehicle permanently parked and compliance with this ordinance may be occupied for sleeping purposes only for a period not to exceed 14 consecutive calendar days in any three-month period." It also states that the zoning administrator may authorize an extension of time for extenuating circumstances. My husband's parents, my mother-in-law, several years ago, they sold their home, they're lifelong Pittsburgh residents too, sold their home, they bought a travel trailer, and they're living their dream of traveling this country and seeing all the things that we all wish we got to do all the time. The bad part is that means they don't get to spend a whole lot of time with us. So, they do come in, we have them come visit. We tried to keep with all of the city ordinances. We had a Pittsburgh business come in and hook up electrical to our house so that they could plug in when they were there. We had another Pittsburgh business come in to lay down some concrete pads so that they could park on the concrete pads to keep us all, all within code. Unfortunately, although there is nearly 75 feet between my nearest neighbor and I-
Yards.
Yards, sorry, 75 yards between my nearest neighbor and I. He does not seem to feel the way, same way we do, and is somewhat offended by their travel trailer being at our house, to the point of, within 24 hours upon their arrival, he's already called to complain to the city. We've had city people out at our house all the time. I spent most of my day today on the phone with the city, so I'm, I'm here today to ask if the commission, I do understand the ordinance, I completely understand that. You know, I get that you don't want a whole bunch of people living in trailers out in the middle of fields or whatever, and I also understand that this ordinance was written with the, with the expectation that, you know, those are the people you're trying to prevent. You know, you don't want homeless people just randomly living in a trailer in a field somewhere. My in-laws are not homeless, they have their home, they just take it with them everywhere. So, it's kind of hard because they come to Pittsburgh, and because they're Pittsburgh residents, their doctors are here, their banks are here, everything they do is here. They, you know, they spend money while they're here, they are a part of the Pittsburgh community still while they're here. Unfortunately, it's really, really hard to get all of those things done in a 14-day period. And so that results in them having to go out to Parkview or out on 20th Street further out and, and pay for a place when we have a perfectly acceptable place for them, that they can come and stay. Like I said, there's plenty of room, they have a beautiful trailer, it's gorgeous. My mother-in-law has some photos to show you. I guess what I, what I would like to ask the commission to consider is extending that 14-day period to maybe a period of 30 days. That gives them a little more time to get here, to do their things, and like I said, they are members of this community while they're here. And, you know, they're members of this community while they're not here, they still read the Pittsburgh newspaper, they still know everything that's going on in Pittsburgh because we're here. If that's not an option, you know, is there some way that we can make it to where my in-laws can come and stay with us and stay right next to us? Because this is all about family to us, this is all about family and community, and we don't want to fight with our neighbors by any means. But we're kind of down to what else can we do at this point? Because it's gotten to the point where, I mean, they're sitting out on their porch and watching us, and watching what we do every day, and it's, it's kind of creepy really. So, but, you know, we just want them to be able to come here and feel like Pittsburgh still welcomes them, and feel like, you know, we want them to be here because we do want them to be here. So, I guess I'd just ask, I would like to ask the commission to consider extending that 14-day stay, or to even allow, you know, one or two times a year, an extended stay, longer than 14 days, so that they could come maybe one or two times a year and just stay with us for maybe a month, so that my kids get to see them, they get to play with their grandchildren, and they can take care of all of their business in Pittsburgh that they need to. That's pretty much everything I have to say, and I'll kind of turn it over to Marcia now so that she can kind of explain a little bit from, about where they're coming from.
Yeah, we've been doing this for a couple of years, we've been on the road four and a half, five years. We just had the pads put in last year over at Kelly and Justin's. What it boils down to, and first off, I would like to thank Mr. Munsell for coming out and looking at the property and the trailer, and for Dawn McNae for returning my call and giving an ear to me, I really appreciated that. She seemed to know kind of where I was coming from, she knew where I was talking about. The whole thing comes down to, we tried to do everything that the city had asked us to do, which I think we have. The only thing I'm sorry for is from the get-go, we were not told about the codes, not until we started doing step-by-step of what you need to do to stay here. We've gone and stayed with the kids. The whole thing boils down to, none of the other neighbors in that neighborhood seem to care that we're there. They honk at us, they wave at us, they're very friendly, except for the one neighbor. And like I said, I have pictures if you'd care to see. We're 75 yards, if not more, from this gentleman's home, we don't bother him, we never have. And from what I understand, it's a picky thing with him and the city, but now he's got the city involved with us, and now we're kind of at a place we don't know what to do. Because we really don't want to get a bunch of lawyers involved in all of this, that's the last thing we want to do. We don't know what to do with him. My son and I went over last year, we tried to talk to the neighbor in a civil tone, and he just didn't want to listen to us. He was very rude to us, and when I told him that we would be coming back, he took that as a threat. And from what I understand, he called the city again, he's written letters, I think, to all of you commissioners, and complained about us. We're just at a standpoint, we don't know what to do, we're asking for extensions of a 30-day, that's it, even if it's for once a year, just so we can get our doctor's appointments and everything taken care of. I'm looking at knee replacement within the next few weeks, but that we're taking off the board, we're not, we know this can't be solved in just a couple of weeks. But we just don't know what else we need to do to resolve this, and if there is anything that we can do. So we just appreciate your help at some point.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Like Ian, Mary Johnson, members of the commission. Hi, my name's Mark Warner, I'm an attorney in Pittsburgh. You have what they didn't want to have happen. I represent Mr. Richard and Marilyn Tyndall, the neighbors who have the other side of the story. And I'm not going to get personal about what's going on with this neighborhood, but I will tell you that the reason that we have zoning laws in this community is to protect the neighborhood and the integrity of the neighborhood, and not to select out any one or two individuals and the circumstances of the individuals, it's to protect the neighborhoods and to protect the residents within the neighborhoods. People buy their houses for a particular purpose and to protect the values of their property's assets, and to protect the value of the properties, and to protect the sightlines of those properties, and to protect the integrity of those properties. And if we start carving out exceptions for one individual or one individual property, then we're going to have to expect our staff to start enforcing on a case-by-case basis those individuals and those individuals' needs. If our community did not have adequate parking for mobile properties, mobile homes, whether they be at 20th and the bypass or across the street, in a private structure, the facility there has ample long-term parking, this could be a problem, but it's not. I appreciate these folks and their coming to town to visit, but they made the lifestyle choice to sell their homes and to travel, and to come to Pittsburgh for whatever their needs are. They can park where they choose on a long-term basis, they can obtain all the necessary medical and other needs that they have, there's nothing restricting them from doing that, they can visit their children as many times as they want, and they can leave town as long as they want and come back as often as they want. The only thing that we're asking them not to do is to park this enormous travel trailer on a sightline to someone else's homes. That's the problem. And my clients have every right to expect the city of Pittsburgh to enforce the zoning laws that this city adopted and has enforced over the years. And all these other issues aren't germane, aren't relevant, and aren't to be considered. And I don't know how you, when you go down this road, to pull out and make an exception in this case, that you're going to start seeing pop-up trailers and tents and other types of structures in a community. Do we want to go there? I don't believe we do. There's a reason for these kinds of ordinances to be in place. 14 days is more than adequate for people to come into our community and park their vehicles, and they're not intended to be permanent. This last year, in 2017, this travel trailer was parked in the driveway from April 1st to July 15th. And I ask you, would you like to have that parked next to your home for that long a period of time? And so, that's the issue here. So, we would ask you not to carve out an exception, it's not necessary, and it's not appropriate under the circumstances, and we'd ask you to not take any due consideration for this request, to keep in mind that my clients have every bit as much right as do these folks to ask you to maintain the zoning ordinance as they stand. Thank you.
Thank you.
Yeah, go ahead.
I have a question, Darren.
Yes.
And I may misunderstand the ordinance, but it reflects recreational vehicle being on a property for more than 14 days, or being on a property and being lived in?
Lived in.
Lived in, so that travel trailer could stay there all year long if they didn't live in it?
That's correct.
Okay, I just wanted to make that clear, I wanted to make sure I understood the ordinance, so.
You do.
And I've driven around the neighborhood since this has come up, and there are numerous vehicles parked around the neighborhood, recreational vehicles.
Okay.
That nobody's living in them, Patrick?
I didn't go knock on the door, but they don't appear, they don't appear to be lived in.
Yeah. Well, it's the, you know, I feel for you people that has the travel trailer there, but also, like Mark said, representing the Kindles, we have an ordinance for the reason not to have people, you know, live in there. And I don't know if there can be an extension for a certain period of time. I understand that you had some issues that you needed to seat a doctor on and had to have that done sometime this month, so I just wonder if there's any way we could maybe extend it a little bit. I don't know what the thoughts of the rest of commissioners are, but...
You know, I'm okay with staff looking at it, and yeah.
I think that's where we ought to go.
I would be okay hearing the proposal from staff, since they're the ones dealing with the ordinance and enforcing it.
Well, staff, for good or bad, went through this last year, so we kind of are experienced in the situation, and it happened to involve the Marconis and the Kindles, so, you know, last year, it's darned if you do, darned if you don't, last year, we, we went ahead and gave the exception under the medical premise that there was some work that needed to be done, and that, I think Dexter was probably new to the job, but nevertheless, we made the decision to give them an extension, and of course, I think that was what was referred to as the extended period last year that they were allowed to stay there. I guess so where staff's at is, you know, where does it end? I mean, we've had, I can tell you this, when, when the staff meets with both of these families, it's always positive, it's, it's professional, and I'm not talking about the staff side of it, I'm talking about what we get back from these, these residents. They're both very compelling stories. Our first inclination is to always give a waiver or allowance, and so that's what we did last year, and I think the reason we're talking about it today probably is because we gave that allowance last year. So, I'm, I have, I don't live where the Kindles live, so I don't have that situation where the line of sight and all those issues. I also have a very loving family and completely understand what the Marconis are saying about wanting to spend time there, but in the end, we have rules, everybody's aware of those rules, and if, if I didn't think there was any hiccup, we would have extended it without even thinking again this year, but I think at some point you have to give consideration to the Kindles and the patients, the patience that they showed with us, not necessarily their neighbors, but with us last year as this thing extended on for two weeks and then a month, and then I think two months. So, not trying to get out of anything. Professionally, I don't know how we could make another recommendation to extend it, knowing that it's been, they had an entire year and knew that they were only going to have 14 days this year, but I would sure like to find a way to. Is that bad enough? Is that a bad enough answer? There's no good answer here, there's no...
Is there a way for people to, ahead of time, apply for an exception, like a permit sort of thing?
Ahead of, I don't know what the process is, but at any time you can ask for, you know, for us to waive it, I think it's on the building official or the zoning, for Dexter to do that, so whether we get prior notice or not, it's, it can be done, it's just a matter of, are we just going to do it every year for the same repeat property?
And how many times a year are you going to do it for other locations? You open up that can of worms when you do that. And if you drive around, there are so many of these vehicles parked in the neighborhood, in different neighborhoods, I think you're, you're really getting a lot of exposure to a lot of, to a lot of variances when you start this process.
Well, the ordinance says that every three months, they can come back for two weeks.
Yep. And last year, there was, I think last year, they actually started at the RV park, there were some issues last year with homeless tents and around Colgan and what that turned into, and the RV park had some, let's just say, some nefarious characters living in it where I don't think it was an acceptable, and the Marconis put up with it as long as they could, and then, so, so last year was just a different deal, but yeah, what it really comes down to is, how often is this exemption allowable to any one family probably, and what's right to do by the neighbors who are right down the street, the ones that are making the complaints, so it's a, if I had a better answer, I'd...
And you do it to any one family, then you have to open it up to every family, and that is the issue.
Well, sometimes the best, as unpleasant as it is, sometimes the best measure of how good a policy is, is how often it's in play. And I know I've been here six years, I don't know how long Henry's been sitting in this chair next to this, but this is the only time this has come up, and this is extremely personal, I can tell you that, and you've both been involved, so you know what I'm talking about. I think we need to hesitate changing ordinances that, that aren't more at play, more in play than this, but I do want to acknowledge that this is personal and, and both, both families are very passionate, and we take it very serious, I just think we need to take pause. And if the ordinance was put there by another commission and they felt they were doing their best job, and it's only come up once in six years, maybe in this case, we probably should leave it and just, you know, I, there's, you know, it's tough, it's just tough. I do appreciate your patience with one another and with us, and that you came in tonight, and, you know, we want everybody in Pittsburgh, we want everybody to enjoy their time in Pittsburgh, and unfortunately, there's just some things that we can't resolve.
Are there any further comments on? If not, um...
Could you take a comment for me?
Sure.
I don't know how many of you have been by my house, and I fully respect your decision, but I do want you to know, this trailer is not in their line of sight, their front door faces an entirely different direction. They have to come out and search to find the trailer. It is not in their line of sight. We're not doing anything wrong, we'll be more than happy to abide by any, any decision you guys make today because we have that kind of respect. Obviously, we came here as individuals, we didn't hire an attorney, we didn't feel like we needed one because we're citizens of this community. You know, we've been threatened, we've been spied upon, I guess maybe it's time to think about whether or not Pittsburgh is the home we thought that it was, because, you know, you say, where do you draw the line when, you know, and I understand, I get where you're coming from, that does open a whole can of worms. But what about the spying, and what about the lies that are told about it being a piece of junk in a huge travel trailer? It's not a huge travel trailer, and it's not a piece of junk. It's beautiful, and I have photos, it's nicer than a lot of houses in this town, I know I've lived in some. So, you know, and I just, I'm not asking you to change your minds, I just wanted to have that on the record, that this is a personal attack, this is the Kindles being personal, that I believe is shown by the fact that they have an attorney present, yet they're not here. And I'm here as just a mom and a citizen of Pittsburgh. And, you know, I guess I just wanted you guys to realize that this is not in their line of sight, it's not bothering them at all, there's no wild parties going on, shoot, they're in bed by 8:30. I mean, so, I just wanted that on the record so that everybody understands that this truly, truly is a personal thing, and that's all that it is. And, you know, where do we draw the line there? And, you know, do I need to look at filing charges now? Not against the city, but against my neighbors, because that's not what I want. I work for an attorney, I could have easily brought one in here with me tonight, but I didn't feel like I needed one. And it's unfortunate, and I think speaks a lot toward the Kindles' state of mind, that that's the first place they went. So, with that being said, thank you very much for your time, I appreciate all of your consideration. If there is ever a time when the Kindles leave town or something, that someone would like to get in touch with me so that we can revisit this, I would love to, because I just want to have my family close by. So, thank you again.
I just want to thank you for coming up and speaking your mind at a commission meeting and public input, because that's how we find out, you know, what the citizens' concerns are. A lot of times, we hear things on the phone or an email, and people don't want to come up and speak in public, but I do commend you, I wish there was something we can do, but we do have an ordinance and, you know, the neighbors want certain things done, and we, and the exception, you know, for you, with, like Patrick said, would might open the can of worms, but I do want to commend you for coming up and speaking in front of us, that took some courage.
Thank you.
Thank you.
How would I go about requesting an extension, sir?
Uh, that man in the red shirt. Guy. But if you get it to me or anybody else, we'll...
All right, thank you very much.
Thank you so much.
Kelly.
Is there anyone else here for public opinion time? All right, if not, we will close public opinion time, and the next thing on the agenda is a presentation of the AAA Platinum Traffic Safety Award by Jim Haney.
Good evening, clearly I'm not Jim Haney. My name's Jennifer Haw, I'm with AAA Kansas, I took Jim Haney's place. I'm here tonight to present the seventh consecutive AAA Kansas Community Traffic Safety Award to your Pittsburgh Police Department. I also want to recognize, although he's not here, KDOT's Dave Corp, he is the law enforcement liaison that helps us identify agencies that should apply for this award. What's remarkable about the last six of these, they've been platinum awards for Pittsburgh, the highest award you can get, and no other agency sheriff, no other agency sheriff or PD has a more consistent track record of excellence other than this agency itself, so. They're being recognized for their continued support of the SAFE program, the seat belts are for everyone, at Pittsburgh and St. Mary's High Schools, also being recognized for continuing to enforce a departmental policy requiring the use of seat belts. The agency is recognized for its deployment of new software to analyze traffic crashes and use a data-drive, data-driven approach to crime and traffic safety called D-DAX, identifying hotspots to more efficiently place resources to reduce crime and traffic safety. In education, they're being recognized for operating a child safety seat fitting station to help parents, as well as child safety seat checkup events. In enforcement, they're being recognized for their special traffic enforcement efforts that have addressed seatbelt usage, child passenger safety, and impaired driving, and for their PSU school startup enforcement to address DUI and seatbelt issues, the first two weekends that PSU is in session, and the ticket or treat. The impressive list of statistics is what brings the platinum award. They're showing law enforcement presence, which changes behavior. Clicker or ticket violations have gone from 197 in 2012 to 225 in 2016. Adult seatbelt use continues to climb from 80% in 2012 to 87% in 16. Teen seatbelt use from 81% to 89% over the same period. The SAFE schools now are at 99% seatbelt use, that's huge if you're familiar with those statistics. They were at 88% in 2012. Alcohol arrests have risen from 100 in 2012 to 170 in 2016, and also, teen crashes have dropped from 64 in 2012 to 18 in the past five years. So I want to particularly thank, now interim chief, I suppose, Brett Don, thank you, and the rest of his staff for doing an excellent job in traffic safety.
Thank you, Jennifers, a quick second of our time here, I want to recognize two of our officers here, we first have Sergeant Travis Bowman, he is the coordinator for the vast majority of our traffic safety, Officer Brett Don, he was this past year's recipient of the Officer of the Year Award, and he also leads the agency in the number of, probably number of the influence for DUI arrests for our agency. Out their efforts and concerted efforts of our patrol division, as well as the support we get from not only our staff, our peers as well, as well. get from not only our staff, our peers as well, as well.
Go, Brent.
I have a question. Sorry, Brent.
Yeah.
She... Jennifer mentioned the D-D-X that are used. Is part of those tools a result of the safety tax, sales tax?
The data that is gathered, some of the data that he's gathered, yes, we report. Some of the data that AAA gets is from the state as well. So it's a combination of all that. But yes, the specific New World program that we do have makes it much easier to get that information. That's correct.
Okay. Thank you.
All right. Moving on to the consent agenda, are there any items to be removed from the consent agenda?
Item F.
Item F?
Item E.
Item E and F? Any others? If not, I will look for a motion for approval of the consent agenda minus items E and F.
Make a motion.
It's been moved and seconded. Roll call, vote.
Chenoweth? Aye.
Johnson? Aye.
McNay? Aye. Munso? Aye. O'Brien? Aye.
All right. Item E. Approval of staff recommendation to enter into an agreement with the Kansas Department of Transportation, or KDOT, to make improvements to the State Highway K-126, which is Fourth Street Bridge overpass, and authorize the mayor to sign the agreement on behalf of the city.
Yes. Cameron, my question is, I know the city is paying for some ancillary things about this overpass. Do we have any guesstimate of what this is going to come up to?
We don't have any cost in this agreement. The...
I thought we had to relocate the utilities and that kind of...
Well, that's part of any of our work beforehand. Yes, we would track that, but I think that utilities has been through that, and we've got minimal, if not no, relocations expected as part of the project.
And when they do this, are we going to have a hiking biking trail across this bridge?
Correct. There'll be a 10-foot wide path on the north side. They originally wanted to have five feet on each side, and we said we'd rather have 10 on one. And at that time, they were trying to get us to pay for the extra, and I think through negotiations, which were all done before me, so I can thank them for their hard work, Mr. Beasley, Darren was part of that, and Mr. Bacon as well, able to get that all done, and that'll be part of the KDOT project, and there won't be any construction costs to us. There could be some minor relocation costs for utilities.
Any idea how much of Schlangor Park will be taken into this overpass, or not?
There'll be just some... Basically, when they reshape the hill, there will be some area. It's probably maybe a couple hundred feet, is what we looked at. It came before the commission before, where it allowed the de minimis impact to the park. So we have looked at that as a group and reviewed and approved that.
So is it going to affect the sled hill? Because I bet we'll get some phone calls.
I imagine it probably will, once everything's said and done. I don't think it'll be quite as steep, so we give and we take away.
I know. It's being smarty.
Thank you. That's all my questions.
Right.
I just had a question on item F.
Oh, well, let's finish up on item E first. I'll take a motion for approval, if there are no other questions.
So moved.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. To approve, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. All opposed, same sign. Motion passes. Item F?
Yeah, item F, not too long ago, there was some discussion about continuing this track crossing, and the railroad would pay for it, as long as we allowed them to close 10th and 7th Street down the three traffic. And I'm opposed to it then, and I just want to make sure that's not any part of this crossing arrangement.
No, it's not.
Thank you.
Okay. If there are no other questions, I'll take a motion to approve.
I'll make a motion.
Okay.
I second.
It's been moved and seconded to approve. All those in favor, say aye. Aye. All opposed, same sign. Motion passes. All right. Special presentation, Department Report, Parks and Recreation. Director of Parks and Recreation, Kim Vogel, will provide an update on activities within her department.
Mayor Commissioners, thank you for allowing me this time to present the Parks and Recreation Department Report. I want to start with some of the projects that we've completed in 2018. Most of these, actually, all of these started well before 2018, but we're happy to see them done, as are the citizens that have been utilizing the facilities. JC Turf Project was a large project that we finished before baseball season began in March. It was a $223,000 project that Field Turf did for us. To date, we have seen 115 games played at JC's, and approximately about 9,000 visitors to the ballpark since the new turf was put in. So we've had tons of compliments on the facility as a whole, it's been very great for those playing and those spectating at the facility. Lakeside Park Playground received surfacing project was completed also beginning of May this year. That was a Kansas Department of Health and Environment Waste Tire Grant Project. It's about a $25,000 project, matching funds for that, great improvement to the park. It was... Port and Place Surfacing was put in under the playground there. So that was completed in May, along with the Kitty Land Train that was completed in May. We had the May 4 ribbon cutting for that project. Project was done with Watco Companies, VET Auto Body, and Mr. Jim Van Beesler assisted with that project for us. Kitty Land opened, it's been open about 26 days now. We've sold 926 individual tickets so far to the park, as well as 614 punch cards, which that's 12 punches for $10. So in the 26 days we've been open, we've had really, really good success so far, and hopefully, we can continue to keep everything running through the summer. And we've also have five private parties booked at the facility. So those are some projects that have already been completed, and then we've got several that are ongoing right now. The Ronald O. Thomas Dog Park is... Staff is working on that. We are doing that project in-house, so it's going to take a little bit to get it done. But if you'll remember, that's a $50,000 project that was donated... Funding was donated by the Ronald O. Thomas Foundation, and it is in Schlangor Park. If you go to look, we've now got the concrete pad poured that will be the entrance to the facility and lead to both the small and large dog sections. So that is done. We have a lot of amenities that are already on-site in our storage unit, waiting for the fencing to go up. So as soon as we are able to get going with fencing, that project, we're targeting mid-August for that to be completed. In Schlangor Park also, the Everybody Plays Playground Committee, if you'll remember, at the beginning of the year, they received a $150,000 donation, and that money is being used to leverage other projects within the park for funding, to help with other projects in the park, as matching money. This year, we have already completed the sensory garden. The garden is complete. Butterfly Garden is normally what we call it, but sensory garden for the park, we're waiting on some pavers to be put in, and benches, and that facility will be open there. So the next steps for the Everybody Plays Committee, later this year, we'll be looking at harmony play, or musical play components, that will be added to the park. We're going to be adding some sidewalk throughout the park, and those play components will go along the sidewalk, so more of a linear play experience than just being bunched together to keep kids moving and playing throughout the park. Another project that we're working on with Everybody Plays is a new shelter house for that side of the park, for the north side of the park. We are looking at a structure that would be a PSU construction build. We have got a $10,000 donation already from Pittsburgh Beautiful for the facility, and then the Everybody Plays Committee has put in a $10,000 grant request to the Pritchett Trust for the completion of that facility. So if that is awarded, then they'll be fully funded for that project. We're looking at 2019, before Pitt State could build that, and it would be identical to the shelter that Pitt State built at the PHS Tennis Courts earlier this year, and it would be a two-semester project, just like that one was. And then, a project that's been ongoing and about completed, we can almost check it off the list, is the Way Finding Project. This project is a project to put signs around town to direct the visitors to various districts through the town, so the North Medical District, Downtown District, the retail districts around town, to the schools, to the airport, and the football stadium. So excited about that project being completed. It was funded $25,000 through the Personal Health Actions for Prevention Grant through Livewell Crawford County, the FAP Grant is what we call it. So excited that some of those signs have already been up, and hopefully, in the next few weeks, they will all be installed. So those are some of the projects that are already ongoing. And then we have a few projects that we have written grants for this year, that we haven't... We don't know if they're going to be awarded yet. So want to update you real quick on what those are. And some of them, you heard about it, are working day in May. But the first one would be the Don Gutteridge Sports Complex restroom and concession stand project. This, we have asked for a $200,000 match from the Kansas Department of Wildlife and Parks and Tourism. It's their Land and Water Conservation Fund grant. So that would provide us, if awarded, the ability to build two new restroom and concession and storage facilities at the Don Gutteridge Sports Complex. This is extremely important, as you'll hear about the number of teams that we've already had through later, but currently, we have three stalls that provide all of the women's, girls' facilities in that whole complex, and about equally for men. So we are definitely shy on restrooms, and so we're excited that if we get this grant awarded, we'll be able to move, hopefully, pretty quickly with getting that project underway. Another project that we have applied for, a grant funding, is also with the Pritchett Trust. It is a project to put a trail along Memorial Drive, on the north side of Memorial Drive. So it would run from Walnut Street to the west entrance of the ball fields, and it would all be up kind of towards the tree line, kind of a scenic trail, up until you get to about the YMCA, where it would have to narrow back in. But we're excited about that project. We already had $28,000 in funding from the FAP Grant through Livewell Crawford County that was for engineering work, that was given to the City of Pittsburgh for engineering work. So we've asked the Pritchett Trust for another $47,000 per year for two years to complete that whole stretch of that project. Worst-case scenario, if they can only afford a part of it, then we just do a part of it up to about the YMCA. But it's really important to get kids and families to that whole recreational district of the YMCA, the pool, and the ball fields, so safely down that road, with all the trucks and the traffic that is on that road. And finally, the last Pritchett Trust's grant that we requested, we requested a lot from the Pritchett Trust this year, was for a new dragon slide, swing sets, and merry-go-round at Quanis Park. So that would be a $20,000 project for those three pieces of equipment to go into the park. So if awarded, we will see those updated. If not awarded, we will still have to remove the dragon slide, because it's reached its lifespan. So the Barney Slide would need to go that faces Joplin Street. So those are a lot of the projects that we've been doing. As far as programs and facilities go, Recreation Division, we have offered 138 classes, special events or programs already this year, with over 1,600 enrolled participants in those classes. We have had approximately 191 baseball and softball teams through our facilities with tournaments and leagues. So that's quite a few teams that have come through to use our three restroom stalls. So... And then, this summer, one of our biggest changes in the summer programming is our camp now and then. We've started offering full-time camp last summer, and this summer, we've got about 45 to 50 kids enrolled weekly so far. We received a $35,000 rural healthy out-of-school time grant that will help us in sustainability for summer nutrition and physical activity for kids. So we've partnered with USD 250 to actually feed onsite, to be an open lunch site at Lincoln Center. And as of right now, including our 40, 45 kids a day, they're feeding 85 to 99 kids per day right now in Lincoln Center. And they believe that number will grow as kids catch on to where we're at. So pretty excited about that. We're offering lunch from 11:15 to 12:45 that's open, and then open snack time from 2:30 to 3 o'clock every day. And that's for anyone, 1 through 18. So even staff has the ability to eat, which is nice.
Cam, what did you project for this summer? What's your... I mean, you might climb above 99, but what... Did you have any projections on what you might ultimately get?
As far as...
The numbers?
The number of kids.
Or you're just crunching your fingers?
They said with West Side, they were usually around 120. So they projected it's going to get to the 120, 140 mark. So it's pretty... It's been pretty exciting, and it's pretty loud in our offices. It's great. Facility rentals, we run out all of our shelter houses, and then Lincoln Center is the only facility we have left to rent. But right now, we're sitting at about... At 238 rentals for this year, with 7,374 scheduled visitors at those facilities. So we've had quite a few people through. The golf course, we've hosted two tournaments this year, and we have five more scheduled to be hosted. We've got 70 memberships that have been sold, memberships and passes that have been sold. Our daily rounds, not including those memberships and passes, we're just about 2,100 players for just paying daily fees to come through the door, which is about where we're at normally. And then, our March, April, and May time is really taking up with the schools. We have about 60 schools, children that golf. So between Frontic High School, Pittsburgh High School, St. Mary's Colgan, and Pittsburgh Community Middle School, we've got about 60 kids in on their golf teams Monday through Friday, Monday through Thursday, from 3:15 to about 5:00. So we're hopping at the golf course. So been moving along there. The Aquatic Center, right now, we're at 361 memberships, which comes from approximately 107 households. That is up. We've got 137 new memberships, and 224 are renewals from last year. We have offered 40... We're offering 47 classes, including swim lessons, lazy river challenge, water aerobics, water yoga. And to date, we've got 392 enrollments, and eight private parties booked at the pool. And then, finally, Farmer's Market. We received a $3,000 Meet Me at the Market grant this year, which is to advertise for the sales of fruits and vegetables. We've been a little slow on producing fruits and vegetables, but I think we're finally getting there, and we'll see some of our sales go up. We did change the way that we have our vendors pay this year. We reduced, actually, the seasonal rates and the daily fees, and took... We took the Web City approach, we took their markets approach, we reduced the daily... We reduced the fee for the seasonal vendor, but then they pay us 3% per market day that they're there. And then the daily vendor that would just come in, or specialty vendor, pays 6%. So instead of paying $25 upfront and not knowing what they'll get back, they just pay us 6%. And that's worked out very well for us, and it helps us track our sales throughout the season, which will help us when we go to write grants, because we had no way of tracking what our sales were for the market before we started this. So excited to see how it plays out for the whole rest of the season, but so far, it's been good, no complaints. And we have 16 seasonal vendors right now, and six specialty vendors at the market. So that is the majority of the update. I do have a quick slideshow to show of all the kids, which I probably could have just shown that and not said anything. But I would like to thank the executive team. Without the help of the other departments, we certainly couldn't get all the grants written. So Jamie is always looking over financing and what we need to do. Matt's team's always helping with mapping and GIS and stuff. So Cameron with his estimating and working, and the police and fire showing up at our programs and events, so... And certainly, my staff. They work very hard, and I'm proud of them for everything they do. So I'm going to turn this on and hope that it works. Unless anybody has any questions first.
The percentage of sales from the Farmer's Market vendors, is that like the honor system?
It is. It is. But Adam is a pretty good judge of what comes through. So in so far... So far, you know, the vendors really understand that it's not anything that we, you know, implemented to, you know, try to track them necessarily, but to help the market and help us get more vendors into the market. Because if we can say, hey, this is what our vendors are selling, you should come be a vendor too.
Oh, right.
So they've really bought into the reasoning behind it, and I don't think we've had any issues.
You know, the other thing, before you start this, I think we should applaud all these people who contribute so much to our parks and recreation, you know, just jotting down while you were talking, Ronald O. Thomas, Pittsburgh Beautiful, the Pritchett Trust, the Pritchett Trust, and the Pritchett Trust. Trust, the Pritchett Trust, and the Pritchett Trust. Wattco, Van Beesler, Vietti, and all these grants that you take in, you really get good community participation for all of this, and I commend you for going out and getting it, and them for opening their checkbooks.
And Pittsburgh State University with all the volunteer work, because we couldn't pull off all the programs that we do without our volunteers, and you'll see some of them on the slide. Thank you.